Zoning Board of Appeals, I will tell you how the hearing will proceed. First, I have to give a notification that this hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access. I'd like to introduce the members of the board. To my left is Lisa Normandin, our board secretary. I'm Al Gravel. This is James Bezakowski, Hans Wintraff, and Pat Callahan. I also have to tell you, I'm gonna, before we start, there are only four members sitting tonight. There are normally five members sitting. In a four-member board, you have to have four members in the affirmative. If you have a five-member board, you can have one person who disents. So I just want to point that out, and I will actually leave it up to you whether you would like to continue with four members or you would like to wait for a full board to file.
We'll continue with my board.
Okay, very good. Okay, the way it will go is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. Then the applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have on the application while you were at the mic. There will also be a public comment period, and if anyone would like to speak from the public, you will please come forward to the mic and give your name and address, and please address all questions and comments to the board. Then the board will go into deliberation. This is a special permit, so there are certain findings. The findings are that it will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health, unduly hazardous because of traffic flow, congestion, danger of fire, explosion, or other reasons; that it will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or the amenities of the neighborhood; that it would be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness of an open use; and that it will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the application.
This is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of each applicant is Ravinder Sahor, Divya Beltek, Inc., does business as Hudson Belting, 96 Summer Street, Medford, Mass. 02155. The undersigned hereby makes application as follows: Seeking a special permit for the fabrication and distribution of belt products. An application for same was dated 9/6/18, was submitted to the building inspector, and was denied by the same for the reasons stated in the letter attached here, too. Proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, 250-4.1 M.1 and 250-4.1 M.3, to extend an existing nonconforming use. Street address of the property is 100 Pleasant Street in Lunenburg, assessors map 95, parcel 19. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is Med Holdings, Inc., 100 Pleasant Street, Lunenburg, Mass. The deed is recorded in Worcester Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 7585, page 89, and recorded March 7, 2012. If the undersigned has any knowledge of a prior appeal, application, or petition concerning the land or building involved in this case, please describe the dates, the case and the dates involved. In March 6 of 2014, a special permit was issued to Michael DeLuca for a distribution center and was granted by the ZBA. The special permit questions and answers are as follows: Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire, explosion, or other reasons? The reply is, "Our operations are in no way are dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous." B, will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply, "Our operations have absolutely no effect on the value of land and building in the neighborhood." C, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness of an open use? C, there is no open use involved. And D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? The reply, "Our operations produce no noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare." Divya Beltek, Inc., does business as Hudson Belting, is an industrial belting distributor and fabricator based in Worcester, Mass. To expand our operations further, we are purchasing the property on 100 Pleasant Street, Lunenburg. And that is signed on September 18, 2018, by Ravinder Sahor of 96 Summer Street, Medford, Mass. Here's a letter from the current owner to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals dated September 19. I'm Michael DeLuca, owner of 100 Pleasant Street, Lunenburg, authorized Ravinder Sahor, owner of Divya Beltek, Inc., to file a petition for a special permit to start a new business at 100 Pleasant Street. Thank you. That's signed, Michael DeLuca. There's the form of intent that was applied for on September 6, 2018, and denied. There is a section of the bylaw that pertains to the case in front of us, and there is also a list of abutters, a map, and a assessors' field card. And I have a letter that the building inspector put together after the application was filed. This is from Gary Rhodes Building Commissioner regarding special permit application. The property is subject to a previous special permit for a contractor's plant under 250-4631J. The applicant is now proposing to manufacture and distribute belt products. It is my opinion that they need a special permit under 250-4.1 M.1 and 250-4.1 M.3. It is my understanding that there will not be any changes to the exterior of the building. The Board of Appeals may wish to accept the existing site plan, which is attached to the application. If the Board of Appeals grants this request, the applicant will also need a site plan special permit from the planning board. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant, if you would like to come up and have anything else to say to the subject, you'd come up to the mic.
I don't have anything to add.
Okay, well, I think maybe it might be nice if you started off by explaining your business, what you do.
Name and address.
Oh, yes.
My name, my name is Garish Sahor, 96 Summer Street, Medford, Massachusetts, 02155. Our business is split into distributing HVAC belts, so V-belts, filters, which we stock in Worcester and will stock here. So that's just the stocking part. The other is fabrication of belts. So you have conveyor belts used in sand and gravel. So we'll have a slitter, a machine, and we'll cut it to whatever the customer's needs is. So let's say if the roll is 24-inch wide, the customer's belt is 12-inch wide, we'll use the slitter and cut the belt. So that's all we're doing. We're not manufacturing anything. We're getting everything made in there. Either we're distributing it to HVAC or lawn and garden people, their belts. The other part is for sand and gravel or other companies that use these conveyor belts, we'll be making it to whatever they need, the width and the length.
Okay, so basically, how much of the, how much is dedicated to the warehouse part? How much to the manufacturing?
So the first...
In square footage?
Square footage is 4,000.
Four thousand is a nine thousand six.
So in total is 9,000. I believe the top floor is about 4,000. That's where we'll keep all the distribution of belts and filters because it's very lightweight. The bottom is where we'll keep in the machines and the slitter and the rolls of the belting to cut. So it's split 50/50.
Okay, thank you. And I'll open it up to questions from the board. The applicant, while he's there.
This will only be one business in there, and what are your proposed hours of operation? What are you asking for?
It'd be the same as what we have in Worcester right now, which is 7:30 to 4:30.
Would you like to expand that, to give you some leeway a little bit?
We might be...
Like seven to six or some, you know?
Maybe in the future, if we, if the business is going well, yes.
So, okay, so, thank you.
Yeah, we'll ask all of them. Anyone else?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Any kind of explosives or like chemicals or anything like that at the, at the premise? No, nothing?
No chemical, no, anything dangerous. It's just, we're gonna have two machines to make the belts to whatever the customer needs.
And are you taking over the entire building?
Yes. So we'll, we're purchasing the whole building, top floor will be using for warehousing of the belts and filters, the bottom we'll be putting in the machines and stuff.
In the current, like the rocks that are out there now, are they moving? Will they be moved? Is that the building that has all the rocks around it?
From my understanding, talking with Michael DeLuca, who owns it...
Yep.
The rocks are with the company that's behind us.
Okay.
And I believe they told me the city asked them to move the rocks, and it's off our property.
It is off your property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Our line is on to the left of it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Walk-up counter, is there like a, gonna be like a walk-up counter for...
Currently, there really isn't. We plan on building some sort of, like a place where customers could come in and sit, and there'll be like a table, and on the other side we'll have the belts and filters. So the customers will be kinda split apart from where the warehousing area would be.
Supply house type of stuff.
Right. Currently, there isn't because with the old previous owner, they weren't really using it as such a business, so it's all open.
Gotcha.
Let me ask about the vehicles, trucks, bringing in the product and also delivering product. Do you, I assume that you deliver product to the industries?
Right.
And that you bring in product there. How does it come in? What size trucks? Where do they go in the building?
So...
Loading docks?
We do have multiple loading docks. We do have a loading dock where the full truck can fit in, but that's gonna be very infrequent, maybe once or twice a month, because the shipments aren't gonna be that frequent. Once we get a shipment in for a month, we'll, because it's gonna be, let's say, like five rolls of belts or six rolls of belts, we'll be all set for possibly a couple of months. Going out, it's gonna be either UPS Ground, which is their smaller truck, or we'll use our van, which is also a small cargo van. And there might be a possibility that customer can request their pickup by some kind of freight account. But either way, we have loading docks where the full truck can fit in without hindering the progress on the road.
Okay. And the noise level from your sliders and stuff, I mean, is that anything you would, you know, you said it's in the bottom floor.
Yeah, it's in the...
How big are the machines?
Um...
Yeah, machines are a little bit, but the sound will not come outside of it.
Okay, all right. Have a hear it. Okay.
It's like a, just a spinning blade. Blade itself isn't gonna make noise because it's gonna be new, you know? And it's cutting rubber, so there's, it's not like steel versus steel where it's gonna be a lot of friction and noise.
Right, okay.
Number, how many employees do you expect to have initially and maybe after a period of time, if everything goes well?
Currently, it's only just gonna be us two, mostly him at that location. Maybe in a year, we'll add one employee to take over the fabrication side, so he can sit and just sell belts and filters.
Yeah, so what about outside lighting?
Outside what?
Lighting?
Lighting.
You have outside lighting at, you know, nighttime security?
Um... That I'm not aware of. I know that we do plan on putting cameras up and near the facility, because we do have cameras at our current Worcester location. We have not visited the property at night, so I don't know. I know there's a street light right nearby.
Okay, okay. Well, the reason I'm asking is just to make sure that any lighting you put, there are residential homes across the street, and we wanna make sure that none of that light reflects into their, their homes or anything like that, other than, you know, the lighting that exists.
Okay.
So if you do put lighting, it has to go down direct...
That makes sense.
...the special lighting they have today that you can use.
Okay.
And then, I thought maybe you would, because I thought you would probably have some type of security.
Yeah.
You do say you have cameras.
So the camera would be like infrared, so that one doesn't need lighting by itself? They can just do it without it? That's what we have in Worcester.
Okay.
And currently, as I said, for at least a year or more, we'll be stopping at 4:30. So we won't be using the building after that.
Well, I think, I think maybe we wanna, do you do weekends at all?
No, just five days a week.
Okay, all right. Do we have any other questions from the board members?
There, I just, there was reference to the planning board directives. Do we know what those were, way back in 2014 when we approved the, the application for this particular location?
I would have to look back. I didn't see anything. There wasn't anything.
Yeah, that, at this time, there were two different things. There was a different manufacturing facility in there.
Right.
And then it went to the last one, which was more distribution.
Okay.
And I'm sure it was referencing back to the other one.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion if not. Do you have a pet? No.
Or do you wanna have a public comment?
Yeah, we have to have a public comment first.
Thank you.
And with, if there's no other questions, you may sit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anybody from the public would like to speak, in favor or against? Okay, hearing none, then I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the permit as requested with the hours of operation, 7 to 7, Monday through Friday.
Seven to seven.
Seven to seven, which is what the...
Okay. Please come forward, name and address, and any issue.
Bob Proctor, 99 Pleasant Street. My house is directly across the street from this building. I have no issues with them conducting business there. The only issue is, you know, it's starting to encroach, you know, first it was, they're looking at 4:30, you know, you were kind enough to say 6:00, now you're looking at 7:00. I think we need to cut back on those night hours a little bit more. You know, there's still issues next door that we don't need to get into tonight, but I wanna, you know, try to curb this before...
So 7 to 5?
Can I ask one question, though?
Sure.
Just, the 7 to 6, the only reason I ask this is I know UPS.
Mm-hmm.
And oftentimes, for businesses, they pick up later. I know in my business, they often show up at 5:30.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with, you know, 5:30. It's the 5 o'clock in the morning and 10 o'clock at night deliveries or whatever that would come in, so...
So what, with 7 to 6 or...
7 to 6 would be fine.
7 to 6, okay, that's...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay. I'll make sure that that's 7 to 6 in my motion to accept.
Okay.
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I'll call for a vote. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You needed four out of four, and you have four out of four. So I do have a little bit more reading to do. It's the post-decision instructions for a special permit. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, and ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance of such conditions may result in revocation of this permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days after decision is filed with the town clerk. After the certification by the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded with the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. The special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced. And with that, we wish you luck with your business here in Lunenburg.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Welcome, too.
Thank you. The next, the next hearing is scheduled for 7:30? Okay, the next hearing is scheduled for 7:30, so we're gonna have a little bit of break here for 10 minutes.
I gave 10, but if you wanna do more than that, that's okay with me. I figured 10 is $50 or more.
Yeah.
So that's reasonable.
Is this more stuff or stuff that you already gave me?
No, this is different. This is more stuff. This is just the driveway.
Oh, okay.
Because I could picture him...
What do we have, what do we, what do we give him?
I said at least 10.
Yep.
That way there'd be, you know, five. Lisa said, yeah, so there'd be 50 for us, all of us, and more.
So he gave me 10.
Unless you wanted to...
He gave me 10.
She has a card to sign.
Okay.
I'll kick in 10, too, but I guess...
All right. 10, 10.
Oh, for one of our board members.
You didn't, you didn't know him. He wasn't actually with us very long. He...
It's only about a year and a half, wasn't it?
I don't even think it was that long, huh?
Yeah, I really don't think it was that long.
I don't tell you that.
Came to one Christmas party.
That's right.
I know, I gave him home, about four rides home, four, maybe five, and...
I know, I gave him one ride home, and then Gary said, "You shouldn't get in that habit." I said, "Fine, I'll have one of the guys drive him home."
You wanna sort of sign this?
Yeah, don't you think you should?
Yeah.
I mean, I can sign it for you, but, you know.
I would totally put in, but I have zero dollars on it.
No problem. No, they just asked that donations be made to the brain tumor, because that's what he died of.
Yeah.
I never would've put him at 61.
I, no, not at all. And they've only lived down here for a few months, right?
Before they...
Yeah.
Before he got on the board?
Total of about a, two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just too bad.
Because I actually called Linda Marble to see how he was doing, and she said, "It can't be good," because she was seeing a lot of people come and go, you know, like care, people.
Right, right. Yeah, it's really too bad.
Yes, did you stay up last night?
I stayed up till 10:30.
Oh, God, I wasn't barely halfway, wasn't it?
What time did it get over?
About nine. Midnight, 12:15 to 12:30. I did not stay up.
It was the top of the fifth when I went to bed, about there.
Yeah.
They were, it was 3 to 2.
Yeah, I'm gonna try and watch some of it tonight.
What time is the game? Same time?
8:09, same thing.
It's 8:09, 8:09, and then it's 8:15, the fourth, the fourth one is 8:24.
Out there?
Yeah.
I don't know why these oddball times.
Oh, these all, I'm sorry.
Rides, there weren't many people for that one. Last time, there were quite a few people from Pleasant Street.
Well, that's because it was the guy in the back with the rocks.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Oh, yeah, he had quite a...
Because I said to Bob, "What are you doing here?" He says he's just sick of the, the stone-cutting guy. You know, in the back?
There's a lot of stones out there.
It's right to the left of this guy's building, too.
Well, that's what I saw, yeah, I went down there.
Yeah, we went through the same thing last night.
Right, exactly, right.
And actually, I'm gonna have to look up, because I believe that we said he had to move those stones.
I thought so, too, for safety reasons, right?
Huh?
For safety reasons, I thought.
And Steve Turner's looking to sell his business.
He's right next door, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wants to go to Costa Rica. I think he bought a property in Costa Rica about 15 years ago.
Yeah, I was gonna say, a long time ago.
Wow, good for him. Yeah, smart move. Places were really cheap back then. I remember somebody trying to get, need a buy one.
Oh, he did, he told me what he paid for, but it just...
Yeah, now it's, now it's skyrocketing.
Well, I didn't realize how specialized his business was. I thought he was still into a lot of turning and unusual business things, like what he, they heated at Tapley's, and now let's just say yes, that.
It's the lumber, yeah.
Lumber. Unusual lumber, it's like what you'd buy from Africa and...
Yeah.
The Middle East.
Specials, yeah.
Yeah.
Huh, wow. I didn't know that either.
Yeah, because, because Bob said, "I thought he'd be here," because he said they've gotten into it before, him and that Joe guy. Well, you know, Joe lives in Westminster. He said all the employees, they all live in town. They live in, you know, wherever they live, and...
Right, right.
These are extras?
Oh, I don't know.
I think that was a...
It was.
I think I had one of that.
I guess, I guess he called Gary, and Gary's like, "He'll be gone next week." You know what I mean, so...
Do you need them?
No, I was giving back to Lisa.
So do you want me to read all the new submissions for this next one?
No.
The only thing...
Oh, wait a minute, yeah.
Yeah, this is all new.
You got that, right?
I think you're gonna read, read.
All the new stuff.
Can we waive the reading?
Yeah, definitely. We don't have to read it, it's a continuance. So we don't have to read that, but we should read the new submitted.
It's just, let me see.
Just, just that.
Just this.
Those two pages.
Just this.
Yeah, just, yeah. Nothing else.
Well, they're getting heavy paper, huh? Have you noticed? Your paper is so thick.
They increased, they increased your budget.
No, this is, this was submitted from the applicant. I didn't do it.
Oh.
She provided all the copies, not me.
They used the good stuff.
We're getting weaker. It's nice the pitches, then you can really, you know...
Yeah.
Well, we are getting weaker.
Take it, Kathy's not coming.
She's like that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I absolutely...
Oh, she's saying right there.
I called it. When I got home, I thought it was... I thought it would be good.
Mm-hmm.
Move along. And she, she forgot about it until I called.
She did, yeah. I'm glad, I'm glad you're reminding me. I think the best part is gotten it off.
Okay, I've got 7:30.
They're all out, they're all out three. They're well out three.
Emily, we're all set to go back.
Okay, you're on.
Okay. Again, welcome to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. This is a continuance from a meeting in September 26 on 1432 Lancaster Ave. for a doggy daycare. At that time, we allowed the petitioner to continue the hearing, to do a little bit more research and address some of the concerns of the board and the animal control officer. And so I know that you submitted a lot of new details, and I will ask Lisa to please read those. And then again, we'll address the continuance of the permit.
Okay, this is from Carlo's Doggy Daycare, revised data that was submitted on October 10, 2018. I've rethought the name on the permit and would like to change the first name on the permit to Teresa Carlo and Donna Carlo II to open a doggy daycare on 1432 Lancaster Avenue in Lunenburg. The greatest number of dogs will be revised to four dogs at a time. Hours are open from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. All dogs will be fed separately in the kitchen, one at a time. It is always best to keep your dog on a regular diet. Please bring plenty of foods for the dog's day. Abrupt changes in their food commonly lead to diarrhea in many animals. If you decide to use our house food diet, dogs are fed Eukanuba adult dry small bites. Dogs are allowed in any room of the house on the first floor. Family room size is 21 by 15. They will be taken out for a walk in the backyard once a day. There will also be two kennels, 20 by 8, attached to the screen porch, which is 19 by 9, on the right side of the house to get fresh air a few times a day. Three inches of pea stone will be put on the bottom of the kennels. The stone will be bleached regularly and also dog houses to keep clean. The waste will be picked up once a day. All waste will be bagged and put in a two-yard container dumpster and be removed twice a month by shaws. There will be a doghouse in each of the kennels for shelter. All dogs will be able to be accessed through the house from the crate room to the front door, middle of the house, which will have a gate put at the top of the stairs and also from the inside of the back room of the house. Kennels will be attached to house and a gate put on either side for access from the yard. Four large crates and one small crate will be placed in the front room, 15 by 13, so that the dogs can rest or stay over. I have found out the additional insurance needed, and it will be done through Westford Insurance Company. Carlo's Doggy Daycare will be responsible for any accidents that may occur on the property. I will call the owner and ask them if they want me to take the dog to their vet or mine. First choice in Lunenburg would be Melissa Susan, Sulin, and Westford Emergency Vet after hours of weekends. I will be home all day, so that if any dogs are barking outside, I will bring them in right away. I'm working on getting estimates from groomers so that I can provide this service to my customers. Puppy Love Grooming in Lunenburg, Genus Claws and Paws in Lunenburg, Wolf Wagon in Ashby, and Lhasa Boutique in Lunenburg. There will be no danger to the public health. The kennel will not be near well. There will only be four cars turning in and picking up dogs, so there should be no congestion. There is a circular driveway to drive out. There will be no adverse effect on the effective land. Only two kennels will be put outside and kept very clean. The doggy daycare will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightlines. The dogs will be put in the kennel quietly and only one kennel at a time. The kennels will be made of fencing that is very clean. Looking the pea stone will be put in the ground in one house per kennel. There will be no noise produced, because each dog that barks will be brought inside the house. The odor from the waste will be bagged each time it is picked up and put in a dumpster. Thank you, Teresa Carlo. There is also some... The business cards from the vets they plan to use, a rendering of where the screen... The dogs will be in the screened area of the kennel. The screen porch is shown here in a photograph. And where the kennels attached to the house on the sides is also the crate room. There's an image of that in the house. There's a photograph of the family room. And tonight was submitted a photograph of the driveway that shows the circular drive to the property. So that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay, and with that, I would invite the applicant back up to the mic. Any questions we may have?
My name is Teresa Carlo. I live at 1432 Lancaster Ave., Lunenburg, Mass., 01462.
Okay. Okay, so I see that you've done some research.
Yeah.
Came back with a lot of the answers that addressed some of the concerns. I think a big plus is going down to four dogs to be, for me.
More manageable.
Very much more manageable for what we're looking at.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have anything else you would like to add before I open it up to the board?
Um, no. We had talked to Kathy. Kathy came out and saw us. And I think I, you know, referred to all her recommendations.
Okay, I see Kathy is... Como the animal control officer is here tonight, so after we get answered a few questions, we'll invite her up to address, because I was hoping that you would get together and reach a...
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Conclusion. And with that, I'll open it up to the board to any more questions they may have on this continuance.
I didn't have any more questions, but I want to thank you for doing the job that you've done in comparison to what you started.
You're welcome. I know, thank you.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
No question? Okay, okay. I think I just want to say, again, the reduction in the dog is a big thing for probably a business plan and for what you're doing to get more used to it. I know that you know that our concerns are, of course, the odor, the barking, the noise. These are the things that the zoning board has to address. You did address those issues in this new submission. And again, I would tell you that you will have to comply with all the town regulations, state regulations. I know that there were some conditions that Kathy had brought up last time about the kennels, the runs, the fencing, how it had to, you know, how high it had to be, how deep in the ground. I think one thing you had mentioned too, that you were going to do a stockade, an eight-foot stockade fence between you and your neighbor. Do you still plan on doing that?
It's on the other side of the house now.
Okay, so moving it over, you think that would...
It's not in the back, me and the neighbor, yeah.
Okay, and again, you'll be maintaining all your setbacks from zoning. You're going to have your insurance. There's some separate runs now that you're planning. Okay. Okay, and I think then you're going to have a dumpster now for the waste.
Yeah, I called them, yeah.
Being picked up, sealed, so there's no odor or flies, anything like that.
Definitely.
Okay, all right. I think maybe I'd like to invite Kathy up, because she would like to speak. If she has any concerns or any comments.
Kathy Como, Animal Control. I think we're all set there. I went there, we talked. I told them what I thought. They listened. I asked her to put in her name, because she works, and she's going to be in charge. So I said the best thing to do would be, when she's home, she will help. But if she's going to be in charge, I said, it really should be you. Taking responsibility. And so she said, "Fine." And the kennels, she has a beautiful screen porch, which you can get to from the front door, because it's all fenced, or through the house. So I said the best bet would be to cut the numbers down, put up two nice long kennels with a doghouse, pea stone, and attach it to the house, so when you open that door, they go right in the kennel. That's what I have at my house. Nobody can escape. Because it goes right in the kennel. And then have it outside access to get in there, too. So she made all the phone calls and got all the prices and everything, and the dumpster, the insurance. I think they've done, they do diligence. I think it's going to be okay. I think four is manageable.
Right.
I told her she can always come back later. You know, down the road a couple of years from now, she thinks she could do more.
That is correct.
Everything's quiet, she could come back.
Mm-hmm.
But I can give her a four-dog kennel license, and I'm comfortable with that to start off with.
Okay, good. And you would still inspect it before you gave them that?
Yeah.
To make sure that they're compliant?
Once she's all done, yeah.
Okay.
She'll call me, and then I'll tell Kathy she can issue a license.
Okay.
For four dogs. They have no dogs of their own. She just has a guinea pig. She has no dogs.
Okay.
Who was sleeping on the couch when I was there. Under the blanket.
I spoiled my pet.
So the house is beautiful, immaculate inside, everything. And the family room where they hang out is, it all... Like, anywhere in the house goes into that room, and it all goes to the porch, so there's no chance for them to get out.
Okay, excellent.
And she's, you know, she's going to put the pea stone, so she can bleach it, you know, with the power hose. And then the dumpster. She should be okay.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. Okay, if there's no other...
Should we stay here or...
You can stay or sit. I don't think there's any more questions.
Oh, okay.
I suppose I should have to tell you, though, you need four out of four. There's usually five. There's only four members tonight. So I should offer you the chance to continue for five members to go with four.
You go on.
All right, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. And with that, if there's no more discussion, I would ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the special permit with the newly presented information for up to four dogs with the hours 6:30 to 6:30. No more than four dogs at a time.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. I think that to be also in condition, we just make sure that these things that are in here, the dumpster, all that stuff, is all conditioned.
I'll agree.
And with that, we have a motion in a second. I'll ask for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. So it is granted. So with that, I have just one more little thing to read. I didn't ask for public discussion, because there is nobody else here. Just in case somebody was wondering at home. Okay. Post-decision instructions, a special permit has been granted with the contingency that the petitioner comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes and ordinances of any and all applicable local, state and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority of the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance of such conditions may result in revocation of this permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After a certification by the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. The special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use or construction has commenced. With that, we wish you good luck with your new business.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
If there's no other business before the board, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll do a second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.